The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is approval of minutes from the regular July 18, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next is a special meeting of July 13, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is communications and correspondence. I have nothing. Do any selectmen have anything?
I'd just like to make a suggestion that we try to keep things moving, that we try to have the public comment, maybe three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, something like that, to just keep the meeting moving along. I don't know how the other selectmen feel. I don't know if we have to be hard and fast with the stopwatch, but just like make the point and let's move on.
I don't think we've been here too late. Obviously, I'm with you. If things start getting carried away, I'm fine with limiting time, but if we're not there and everybody hears what you're saying, the sentiment from the beginning, and they're giving it to a respectful time, I say we don't put a time on it, but just, you know, I don't think we've been at any meeting too late yet, so I'm fine with leaving it the way it's been.
Okay.
But I'm just one.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think a reasonable amount of time is in order, and reasonable might be five minutes.
It's really up to the board as to how we implement Robert's rules. You can overrule me. I will remind people if they can. I think five minutes is actually a pretty good amount of time. I don't know that too many people have gone beyond five minutes, honestly, at each time. That's a long time when you're speaking, so I think it's reasonable, but it's really up to the board of selectmen because it's your public comment.
If the majority does want the five minute, I would just say obviously the five minute we count can be their first time up, and they're more than welcome to come up the second time. That's happened at many other meetings. I'm fine with that if that's what we're...
I think that's reasonable.
But I think, once again, I don't think the meetings have gone too long. It actually looks like there's less people in the crowd, so I'm ready to hear what residents have to say, so I would personally just leave it alone, but just one vote.
Well, most commissions and boards do ask that, but as you say, we'll use good judgment, as do all of our residents. So I will do my best. I'm a little low on battery, so if anyone has stopped on their phone, that would be helpful, because I know mine is probably not going to make it through the whole meeting.
I got this.
Jim?
I think I can back that one.
Who hasn't?
I got it.
Okay.
And if we are...
All right, so we'll start with public comment on this side. Public comment?
No, we're going to...
What's public comment?
Public comment is on our agenda as number six on the agenda. I will point out that during the regular meetings, seven through 12, that is the board of selectmen's time to speak, that is not give and take time. So if you want to make comment, please feel free to make it during the public comment.
Susan, if I may, I was assuming under number eight where I asked for the residents to put enforcement on the agenda, I assumed that would be back and forth.
It's typically not the way we run our meetings. Again, that's up to the full board. That's not the way we run our meetings.
I put it on the agenda for the public to speak. I didn't put it on the agenda for...
For the public to speak?
Correct.
I thought it was for the selectmen.
No, no, I made it clear at that meeting, because I actually said certain things would be...
Again, it's up to the board as to how they want to run the meeting then. It's up to the board. If they want to have a back and forth, they can, but I have always run the meetings. On occasion, we do allow comment, but we do not have back and forth and free dialogue. That's not the way we run our meetings. But the board can overrule me and however you want to run your meetings.
Well, if I may, Susan?
Yes.
We have things on the agenda like a solar project by Andy Bauer. He gets up gives a presentation. He's allowed to speak. If we have things on the agenda such as enforcement, and I listed the few people that requested that to be added to the selectman agenda, I don't believe that to be a problem to have back and forth. I think it's our obligation as elected officials, and where there, I had only mentioned a few in the last meeting that had been in the meeting that had requested it, and I don't believe that is an issue in any way, and we do have back and forth on many other things, such as, I just mentioned one on this identical agenda, Andy Bauer, solar, we would have given him the ability to speak.
Yes.
So I think anybody that was listed or anybody that had the enforcement wanted to come up and speak, I think they should be allowed to, and I don't believe that we should be in any way trying to prevent the public from speaking on that matter.
Two things. Mr. Bauer is chairman of our Clean Energy Task Force Committee. That's why he is on the agenda. And again, it's up to the board of selectmen. They can determine how they want the meetings to run. And as you said a few minutes ago, Ben, I respect your opinion, but it's the full board. So when we get to that section of the agenda, it's up to the board.
Well, if I may, could we discuss that now? Because if not, everybody should be speaking under public comment.
Now, I think, Tom, I think that we should do it when the item comes up on the agenda. That's typically when we do that. But again, it's up to the full board. I'm trying to run efficient meetings, and it is up to this board as to how you want your meetings to run. Under Robert's rules, we have public comment time at the beginning and at the end, and we do have on occasion times when people come and present information to us. So it's, again, it's up to the board how you want to run your meetings. And when we get to that point, if you want to engage with two people, with 15 people, that's up to this board. But it's very important that we run efficient meetings to get business done. So we'll leave it up to the full board.
Well, I guess I just got this question, is that I'm going to assume that the discussion's going to be focused on two items, and certainly one of them is clearly still a legal case, so it's going to be very difficult to go on a back and forth about something that's very active. I mean, they're both still active, but I mean, from that standpoint, I don't know where you're going to draw the line in those discussions. If we're talking in generalizations or general terms, I understand, but my expectation is going to wander down the road of specific cases, and now I don't know where you're going to draw the line with what you say or don't say, given that there could be legalities to it.
Like I said, there were actually a few in the last meeting that I listed. I believe there was the dog enforcement for Rocky, and I do believe that one would be put under executive session, so I think you're right, because that one still has pending litigation. I believe the O'Keefe's driveway has come up in the past, people having comments on that one. I believe that one is still pending litigation. I believe the Satajays were, two from that family, had spoken and said they wanted discussion on uneven enforcement, and I think it's fair to say, if a resident asks for something to be put on the agenda, I think we're obligated to listen, and I think we're obligated to put it on the agenda, and I'm prepared to listen to the residents. So if somebody else doesn't want to listen to that, once again, like Susan said, she wants to run an efficient meeting, this is, you know, I want to hear from the public. That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that, it's just I'm worried about it's going to go into a back and forth. I understand if they want to speak, that's fine.
Yeah, I think if it goes down that road, we, you know, pending litigation has to be shut down, and that has to be done in executive session.
I will, for the full board's extent, there was a memorandum, a letter, shared by one of the parties associated with the driveway issue, and when we sent it to all of the selectmen, and we sent it to our insurance carrier, and we sent it to our attorney, they felt, the insurance company and our attorney, that there is potential legal action that is mentioned in that memorandum that went to us, and it is not from Mrs. Satajay. Now, did we get a copy of that letter? I sent it to, it was addressed to the selectmen. It was sent to the office of my secretary, and it was asked to be shared with the full board of selectmen. Okay, solid. Oh, I... Absolutely, you may. Well, thank you for your permission. It means so much.
I like the order in which we have the agenda. We have approved the agenda already, and I think we should go on with the agenda.
Okay, so I'll open it up for public comment.
Is there a two-public comment section?
Number six and number 13.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you. All right, Robert Satajay, 111 Collins Hill Road, Portland, Connecticut. And up here speaking, addressing the selectmen, and people in town hear about the uneven enforcement and how the town hall is very unapproachable for the typical citizen here in Portland. And typically, if you have an issue with the town of Portland, the town is very unengaging and will push you back, almost with the idea that they want to force you into some type of other action rather than helping you. Going, you know, everybody says, oh, you can't fight with town hall, and that's the attitude you get when you walk in the town hall, that they're trying to run the statutes of limitations on you. And last couple weeks ago, an article was in the River East about Kelly's driveway to turn back, the headline's driveway to turn to gravel. That didn't happen. So they went up there and worked on the driveway, and there's still 200 feet of pavement left there. Unbeknownst to us, no monitoring, no correspondence from the town. He just did as he has done for the last five years, just did as he pleased. So to give you an example, in this article, it says, to give you about the smoke and mirrors you get when you deal with Bransfield's staff, Carrie Olson, she described the town's efforts as exhaustive to address the driveway issue. She said, she said, "Much of the past two years has been spent trying to facilitate an agreement between the two parties." So that work, I mean, that is mind-boggling that she could use that word, because they allowed Kelly to vacation in Florida, six months out of each year, for a total aggregate amount of two and a half years down in Florida while this was going on. Yet, she's got the nerve to say they put in exhaustive efforts to get an agreement and try to pin that we were uncooperative when we were very proactive, getting out of work, meeting Kelly on his driveway with Bransfield and Kelsey to discuss ideas. And we were in agreement with some of the ideas they put forth, which one of them was for Kelly to put in a weir wall. Anybody know what a weir wall is?
Please describe it.
Yeah, right. That's, you know, so it's that terminology, the jargon, you know, it's all pudding. Well, I don't know, what's a weir wall? But in layman's terms, it's a dam. So that sounds like a great idea. Let's slow that water down coming off that driveway. Yeah, let's do that. All right, we're all in agreement. Everybody's, we're up on his driveway up there with Ms. Bransfield and Kelsey. We walked the properties, all where that water's going. This weir wall's going to work. He has his town engineer there as well. So he digs a 40-foot-long trench, two to three feet deep. It's still there, and it's making a worse mess than when it originally started. The water is aggregating there. It's a pond. You could throw koi fish in there.
I was, by the way, I was just up there at 5:00 looking, because I wanted to have a visual for...
Yeah, absolutely, of course.
I figured we'd be talking about this. So I looked at the driveway, and I saw the 200, the last 200 feet, it still has asphalt. Where is this weir wall in relation? I know where your house is.
Yeah, yeah.
Where was that on the, is it...
Yeah, so...
Or on Kelly's driveway?
Well, okay, so if you're walking up that driveway, you know it comes to a peak, and then it comes down to another valley, and then it goes into the residence there, and right behind our house is approximately where that weir wall would be. Now, if you're familiar with that 13th fairway on Quarry Ridge, no, it's the 12th fairway, where the, right where the green is, that water comes off of there and off that property into the Kelly's property. So it would be, you know, across the cart path, and, you know, probably about 20 yards in front of where that sand trap is on the right. And that weir wall, the dam, he removed trees, dug that ditch, and it's butts the driveway. And so it's about...
So it's between Kelly's driveway and the fairway, or is it between Kelly's driveway and your property?
It's between Kelly's, it's between Kelly's driveway and the fairway.
Okay.
And it's right, you know, right on the drive, right next to the driveway. It butts it just about. There's a lot of lugs there that he couldn't remove, but anyway, it condenses the water and pushes it further down and aggregates it even worse. And it's about three-quarters up the driveway, so you got a significant mess up there that is going to, it's got to be addressed. It has to be filled in, or the situation is worse, and this is not going to go away. This will be back here every time there's a, we'll keep on pushing until that's filled, because it makes the situation worse. So they can spin it any way they want. Who knows what their narrative is in executive sessions? It, you know, when they're putting awards in like exhaustive efforts, that is an outright exaggeration. I mean, how do you let somebody go to Florida for two, you know, every year for six months and say it's exhaustive? And this is why we felt uneven enforcement, it's not the same for other, the average citizen that walks in a town hall. Obviously, they were coddling, biased. They were working to work, make it easier for the perpetrator, the person who violated the zoning law. They were working totally with Kelly to get this done. This article also states that the ruling was based on the 2006 approved plot plan specifying the existing gravel driveway was to remain in its natural state, including grass. It's just about chip sealed. There's no grass. It's not to its original state whatsoever. First selectman, Bransfield, said this week she's working closely with Olson and Jacobson to ensure the driveway is returned to the way it was in 2006, and it certainly is not. Our engineer will go out to make sure this happens. It did not happen. So there, it's inconsistent. It's difficult to deal with, and it goes on to the uneven enforcement and other issues dealing with the town, such as the Ethics Commission, which the ordinance is muddied as you could ever read anything. You don't know what the heck they're trying to say, or how you file an ethics complaint, because they're trying to, they'll nip you on technicalities and semantics, because that is so difficult to read and file a complaint, which I know there has been other people who have done it, and they've got turned back. For instance, a gentleman by the name of Warrenoff in 2016 filed a complaint with the Ethics Committee regarding the Elmcrest project. He called upon the Ethics Commission to review the public record involving the Elmcrest development over the past 18 months, and this was in November of 2016. The defendant stated, "There is significant public concern about the unethical behavior throughout the Elmcrest development." The ethics complaint was denied by George Law, the chairman of the Ethics Commission. He stated that the complaint did not cite a specific ordinance alleged to be violated, which is insanely difficult to tie it into a specific Section A, Code B, Letter C, that he can say, "Did you violate that specific code?" Because it's very difficult how it's worded. And so this commission is using the ambiguity of that ethics ordinance to dismiss complaints on technicalities and semantics without, who knows if they're actually investigating the complaints. And what goes on, you know, behind the closed doors, which is unusual for an ethics commission. Why would an ethics commission work behind closed doors? And I inquired to the ethics commissions. I called them, and I got a written response saying, "It's inappropriate for you to reach out to us." Doesn't, and doesn't anyone think it's odd that the chairman of the Ethics Committee seems to be the go-to attorney when somebody's suing the town? I believe he has eight to 10 cases now of residents suing the town of Portland. So on the one hand, he doesn't hesitate to disgrace the town's management and ethics, and on the other hand, he's the defender of the town's management and ethics. I just can't wrap my arms around this. I don't know if you can. But the public, public sector ethics is an attempt to create a more open atmosphere within government operations, and this is definitely not an open atmosphere. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side, please? Mrs. Satajay?
Melissa Grier Satajay, 111 Collins Hill Road. Before I jump into the, back up with what my husband just said, want to give you a walk through my life here in Portland. So when we first got into, when we first moved into our house, we found out that the house was never inspected, right? So this is the old Kalanowski ring, okay? So he leaves office, now we have new selectwoman. We're very excited. We're like, this is great. This guy was horrible. He let things slide. With the change, change is good, especially a changing regime, somebody that's been in their position for too long. That's good. No, it wasn't. Same stolen walling, same thing. They can't help. They can't do anything. We had to sue. We had to sue the town to get our house inspected, which is ridiculous. We had to sue the town. I had to spend money as a taxpayer to sue myself. It's kind of what it worked out to be. So that was my first foray into working with folks in town hall. Melissa say, didn't leave me with that warm, fuzzy feeling. So then the next time that I have a dealing with somebody in authoritative position here in Portland, was when our house got burglarized. I've been in Maine for the weekend. My dad's going through cancer treatment. My husband is home taking care of the house, watching the dog. I come home, and I notice the screen is cut. Call the police. My husband comes back, and by the time the police got there, or Bob came home, and then the police got there. So we meet the police. One officer goes with Bob upstairs. One officer goes with me. No red flags. Then, the officer tells me that it was an inside job, and it's probably because my husband has a gambling problem. Imagine my surprise, considering that my husband doesn't gamble. My husband doesn't even buy scratch-off tickets. Then, when I got that pushed out of the way, then we found out the real story. My husband had another woman in the house. That's who did it. I said, "You know what? It's a great point. Let's go ask him." So me and the other officer toddle downstairs, and we meet up with my husband, who has just had his entire watch collection stolen. The watch collection that his parents would commemorate milestones. First day of school, first day of Little League, first day it's college. All of the watch is gone. Then we're told, you know, "This really looks like an inside job." It's hard to believe, going on and on. Hard to believe. Looks like an inside job. Well, that stayed as the topic of conversation until we assured the policeman that our insurance policy would only reimburse when we would present them receipts, paid receipts. It was after the Cromwell detective got involved, and they started finding other people getting robbed or burglarized here in Portland, that all of a sudden, my husband didn't have a gambling problem. My husband didn't have another woman in the house. It wasn't an inside job. It was three folks from Middletown. But these are the things that I run into. Never met these guys. As a matter of fact, when we were going to give our victim's statement, we ran into one of the police officers that were at our, was at our house, at the courthouse. He's like, "What are you here for?" "Here to give my victim's statement against Saeed." "Oh," you know, he was doing some work up at the high school. Really? The guy who burglarized our house was doing work up at the high school? Nice. Then the police officer went on to tell us what a nice guy he is. My husband and I aren't nice people, I guess. We're just taxpayers. We just pay our taxes. But hey, that's okay. Then, for quite a few years, I was pretty radio silent. Didn't send any emails, nothing. Then Kelly decides to pave his driveway. I call up, and I'm like, "What's the deal? We're going to watch it. He's going to be monitored." That didn't happen. Absolutely paved his driveway. Nobody stopped him. As a matter of fact, my favorite story is Richard Kelsey going up to stop him from paving it, but it was all done. Well, that's really funny, because I have a picture taken, and it wasn't done. Absolutely wasn't done. So, but hey, what do I know? Just a taxpayer. So we have the Kelly issue. Goes on and on and on. Could not be coddled anymore. I have to take time off of work. I'm a contractor. I don't get, you know, I play, what is it? Play to pay or pay to play? That's how I get paid. I don't get paid for walking the Kelly estate, but I have to. I have to, because I have to look out for myself. My husband has to look out for us, because we can't trust the very people that we should be able to. Wouldn't you like to be able to trust somebody to do their job? It would be nice, right? Can stay at work, get your things done, so I can make money to pay my taxes and get no services. That's awesome. So, let's see. And again, you know, we get the stiff arm. I haven't paved my driveway, broken any zoning viola, done any zoning violations, but Kelly's a great businessman. I really wish I could be enlightened on that opinion, but that's not going to happen. I've shared my feedback from a meeting that Sharon Hoy and I had with selectmen Bransfield. I'm like, "What's the deal? No fines, no liens?" "Oh, well, they've been advised by the attorney, the town has been advised by the attorney not to do it, because they want to avoid a lawsuit." Well, how's that working out for everybody? Because we've got a guy for two and a half years, went to Florida, no issues, no problems, while everybody else is getting water, and the water went into public streets. So tell me more about how our selectwoman is interested in public safety, because being in a street, that's problematic. I called the DEP. DEP is like, "Sorry, can't help you. It's going in town roads." And she goes, "You really need to call the town." I said, "I did. They're not doing anything." She goes, "Don't worry. They will when they get sued." And I said that. I shared that feedback with Carrie Olson. Carrie Olson wasn't appalled by the water going into the road. Carrie was appalled that somebody at DEP said the town would care when they got sued. Priorities. I'm not one. My husband's not one. He's not one. A lot of folks aren't one. But Kelly's a great businessman. The town's been very aggressive to litigate. Not going to drop the name, but they've been very aggressive to litigate against a family about a similar issue. The town wants to, this is a quote from Carrie Olson, "The town wants the court to force the defendant to stop certain behavior regardless of the avenues for appeal or alternative solutions may be available." avenues for appeal or alternative solutions may be available." Really? Because when we asked for that to happen with Kelly, we were told, no. No, he's got a right. He has a right to appeal. He has a right to go in front of the courts. So evidently, he's able to, but this family's not. Does that sound even to you? Because it doesn't to me. Also according to Carrie Olson, if the town can't file a lawsuit in cases like this, it would put every municipality at the mercy and whims of those who violate zoning regulations. It sure does. It sure does. I can tell you right now, that every time I get debris down the hill, and my husband has to go dig it out, because it comes off that hill, because of the huge trench that's dug, and now the water's coming down even more, because nothing's been done with it. But that's okay. Because we'll just keep paying our taxes and entertaining you all by coming up here. Seems like the town does not have the same appetite for justice with certain folks that they do for others. When we've reached out to the town, because he's doing work up there, on the driveway, grading, removing trees to put in the weir wall, the town has come back, the town's attorney has come back, well, it's not related to the driveway. Well, I guess he just got bored, and he took all those trees away. And he dug that great big hole, or area out behind the ledge. I guess he was gonna do some gardening. Maybe Carrie's more in the loop on that than I am. I find it odd, and another example of uneven enforcement, that we've had a number of dog bites. Bites, not using the word attack, bites. Dogs have been placed in, I think it's a 14-day hole, is what I was reading? And they go home. But, for some reason, a particular instance where someone was bitten, and represented by a board, a former Board of Selectmen's law firm, while he was a selectman, represented someone. You guys can fill in the blanks, I bet you can. Doesn't it seem weird? Am I the only one that that seems really odd? Let's see. Oh, and then, when we first started coming to the meetings and we learned about the Rocky issue, somebody asked about the kill order. And in the kill, the comment was, the kill order was recommended by the town's insurance carrier, because the dog would bite again. So, our select woman is a select woman, police chief, zoning enforcement officer, z, you wear a lot of hats, don't know how you do it. When we've pointed out public safety issues, we've been ignored. Ignored, completely ignored. That's not fair to the other residents on Rose Hill, nor is it fair to the other residents on Collins Hill. We're in the homestretch. So where are we now? The Kelly zoning violation, huge gray area. You know why? Because we're not kept in the loop. We have to hear things through the grapevine. Long time ago, I was told, we were all told in writing, that Carrie Olson was gonna be point, and Carrie would get back to us. That doesn't happen. Doesn't happen. Sometimes she does, sometimes she doesn't. But I'll bet ya, that we get a bill. I bet ya she's real good about following up on her, on her bill. Bet ya she's awesome at that. Kelly has 200 feet of his driveway. Good for him. He's suffered so much. The town's engineer is stating, oh, this is a good one. Now the town's engineer is stating that one of the neighbors, the water that they're getting, is from the golf course. That Kelly built. That Kelly built. And the drain on the driveway, that there was absolutely no drain on the driveway when it was paved, because there's pictures at Town Hall. Now all of a sudden, it's, it was miraculously paved. Or, I'm sorry, the drain was there. But hey, pictures, I don't know, maybe somebody photoshopped it. Because, you know, poor Kelly, ugh. I don't know how he sleeps. Poor thing. Then, when we pushed, you've probably got the, the idea, I have no problem pushing back. And that was really appreciated, I'm sure. Carrie Olson did let my husband know, that it's up to the town, how they want to enforce, enforce statute. It's up to the town. On how you want to do stuff. So this one can do it, this one can't. So it's very fluid. How do you, how do you feel when you know that your statutes are fluid? It's awesome, right? No, it's not. It's not, it's expensive. It's unfair. It's uneven. It's not right. It's not ethical. It's not moral. Let's see. So, again, we have the one family getting sued, you know, their public enemy number two, because Kelly is a delicate flower. Then we have public enemy number one, a dog. A dog is being held higher than, to a higher standard. A dog, let that sink in. A dog is being held to a higher standard. A dog. And, so, now don't. So now, I guess, you know, if, if, if you had to write last name, if you knew the right people, this wouldn't be happening. So, sorry. The taxpayer continue to pay the town's attorney to fight cases, to be cherry picked by our select woman. They'll do this one, but we won't do this one. It's what it looks like to me. That's my perception. And I can bet you, there's a couple of other folks that feel the same way. This type of discrimination needs to stop. And that's really it. Any questions? Comments? Go ahead.
So back when you were talking about the, the house was never inspected, and, well, when did you, let me ask you this, when did you buy the house? When did you move in?
In a nutshell, we found the house on Realtor.com, right? So we go and look at it, there's no Realtor, the guy who was building it. Guy who's building it says he is, he was building it for him, himself, and he ran out of money or something like that. He was a scam artist. The house never was inspected for the, for the, for the CO. And we didn't find that out until one of the folks from Peterson Oil came out, and they were looking at something, because they didn't do some work correctly. And the guy's like, how did you get this pass? And he's looking around, I'm like, what do you mean? And that's when we started finding out. And that's when we started looking into it. And come to find out, according to the state's Attorney General, and Chris Law, the former building official for the state of Connecticut, our house was absolutely not inspected. And it was, it ended up, a gentleman, can't remember his name, from Middletown, the building official over there, ended up, he, he did the, and then after we won in court, which we did, that's when the town finally did the right thing.
About what year was that? Nineties?
No. No. I think it was in 2007. It was a while ago, but the reason I wanted to take.
Well, it's still fairly recent, because it was after Quarry Ridge Golf Course was built, though, that you moved in there.
Absolute, oh, are you, go ahead, go ahead. Are you gonna tell me that it's our fault because we moved?
No, I'm not, no, I'm just trying to get a.
Because I love that one, too.
Because I think there was probably a water issue, though, from that golf course.
It's funny that you mention that, because when they were built, when they were building the house, I was living up in Syracuse, not from here, did not see it out. And I went into the garage, and I asked the, the guy who was building that, I'm like, gee, there's a lot of water in here. He's like, oh yeah, we're just cleaning the equipment. I'm like, oh, okay. I mean, my dad's built numerous houses, it didn't raise any red flags with me. What raises red flags, is the fact that the town was aware of the water issue up at Quarry Ridge in the nineties. They chose not to do it. I have all the records, if you want them. Paid a lot of money for FOI stuff. So, yeah. So he's been flooding those areas, I have something in my eye, I'm not linking at you. He's been flooding those areas for two administrations that we've sat through. Both administrations handle him with kid gloves.
Yeah, just want to add something to your question as well. Since Kelly put in that driveway, though, he actually increased.
It's gotten worse.
Absolutely.
And, and it's even worse now with that trench there, so, over those years, we worked on managing. Mitigating that drainage, alright, so it was somewhat manageable, you know, still a problem, but, you know, got arms around it, but then, you know, lo and behold, over Fourth of July weekend, without pulling a permit.
For changing his.
He, he goes, starts on his own to pave that, and it, you know, increased the water runoff, condensed it more, and.
So the water got worse.
Indeed, of course. And now it's, with this trench there, it's just the same, you know, as worse as it ever will be. And he never pulled a permit to pull out that driveway either, so how do you actually?
There's no papers.
How do you close the loop on him doing the right thing? There was no oversight, no monitoring of him pulling out that driveway, and they changed course right in the middle of it. So it is worse, even though, you know, there was a water problem prior, it got worse.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, it is documented. I'm sure you gentlemen have picked up on the fact that I love a good email. I've been CCing you, because I'm thoughtful like that. I'm also transparent like that. I don't want you to just have a two, you know, a five-minute Melissa's up on the podium, and a little honked off. I want you to see. These are the things. These are what rile me up. I don't hesitate to send an email. I think it's important to document. I think it's important to have an archived history of things, unlike some people. And with that being said, I was pretty quiet for a number of years. A number of years. In fact, I can only find a couple of emails. One was when Kelly decided he was gonna start blasting, and he didn't have the proper permits. So they told him he was gonna start blasting. And then the other one had to do with Chinese lantern release. But otherwise, I was pretty quiet for a number of years, because my husband worked with our engineers' plan on mitigating the water. So, that's it. Any other questions? Comments, concerns, wishes, dreams?
The only other thing I would add is, I don't feel comfortable that you have to Freedom of Information Act, FOI-A, to get something that you're potentially involved in, and if I am allowed to request, Susan, if you could include her on those emails that have to do with the Kelly situation, I would think that's fair, and if I'm wrong, you can speak up and tell me, or if I'm missing something.
The one that was referred to earlier.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. What's that?
The, the email that was referred to previously was sent by Sharon Hoy.
Then I can reach out, I can reach out to Sharon.
Okay, I just, I.
That wasn't something that came to me directly.
Okay, but, I. Yeah, if it has to do with the driveway, I just think, especially if it's from our attorney, maybe I misunderstood, so that was from Sharon, not from our attorney?
I, I don't know. I don't know, I have to take someone's word for it, because I'm not included on emails, and I don't always get a response, because evidently, I don't know, maybe my emails don't go over well.
Well, it.
Either there's the water that comes up to my back.
I would put a caveat, if our town attorney was involved in that, then, and obviously it has to do with that driveway, I do believe you should be privy to it, if that's not the case.
The email she was talking about before was not from Carrie, it was from another neighbor.
No, that wasn't what I said.
I typically don't send emails to everyone that is, comes into the town, and, you know, I, I don't want to talk too much about it, because it was something that was requested to be sent to the Board of Select by a citizen. And that's what happened, you received that.
Okay, that's the letter they're referring to? Was Carrie involved with that letter at all?
It was requested that it be sent to the Board of Selectmen, and it was.
Oh, I have background on that one.
It went to Michelle, and it went to you, then.
Actually, Carrie Olson reached out, I got a little bit of scoop on this one. Carrie Olson reached out to Sharon Hoy and said that she needed an email or a memo or something like that, right away.
That's not the one I was referring to, Mrs. Sadaj.
That's, but, but that's fine. But I want to talk about this one, because I think that you gentlemen should know about this, because I don't know if you do or not, because it usually goes in a cloak of silence, executive session.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the memo that Carrie Olson reached out to Sharon Hoy, and asked her to sign off on Kelly keeping the 200 yards of his driveway. Jeff Jacobson had a conversation with Sharon Hoy.
Yes.
I'm not going to, to get into the discussion that Sharon and I had. Sharon is a, has turned out to be, with the, with the good, with the bad comes the good. I've, Sharon Hoy is wonderful. And I felt badly for her, because she shared with me that, you know, I feel like you're being left out of the loop. Like, it's okay, I'm used to it. Just pay taxes. Feel like my dad, my dad used to tell me when I was a kid.
She sent that to you, I believe? It was her memo? I may be mistaken, it was something she wrote, but I thought she had sent it to you.
No, she told me that she was sending it, because I had different, I had different opinions on it. But then again, I'm not that intimidated by Carrie Olson. Not in the least. But, yeah, long story short, so Sharon's gotta hurry up and sign off on it, and, you know, it's gonna get worse if he pulls the driveway out. And oh, by the way, the water that you're getting is from the Quarry Ridge. So wait a second. The water that was a problem at Quarry Ridge, when Kelly owned it, wasn't a problem, but now that Milano owns it, it's a big problem. What happened? Same water, same 12 fairway. I haven't seen trucks up on Quarry Ridge. Then again, you know.
She sent you the memo on the 12th.
Well, then I'll go in and check my, I'll check my email.
Of July at 4:05 PM.
Bravo, you got me. Bravo, madam, bravo. Hats off.
So, so.
Excuse me, I did not intend that at all.
Okay.
So just so I understand, did, did you get the memo from Carrie Olson that she sent to your neighbor? Yes or no? That's what I'm, I'm not referring.
I have to go in and check my email.
Okay.
Because I don't trust anything that I hear from certain folks.
I want to ask the selectmen if they're, if they're comfortable with this conversation, this back and forth on these issues, it's involving people that are not here. I am speaking to the selectmen, and if you want it to stop, you can take a vote on that.
Then I won't bring Sharon's name up anymore.
No, I'm asking the selectmen for their opinions. I need to know.
Ooh, I'm being shut down.
Excuse me, I'm asking the selectmen. Can I have an answer? If you want it to continue, that's fine.
I don't, I think, I mean, early on, we, we talked about a length of presentation during public comment, and we said five minutes, we've kind of gone over to the five.
Oh, absolutely.
We've, we've asked, you know, we've listened to what you've had to say, there's a lot of things that you have said that I've written down to find out more about. I think I need to know more about who did when and when, and what Carrie Olson's opinion on this. So I think that your time at the podium is complete, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
And as far as the continuation of the meeting, I'd like to have it continued in following the five-minute, give or take, reasonable amount of time at the, at the podium. But I have listened to what you had to say, and I think that you have a lot of good points that we need to address.
I agree with you.
Just to comment on this.
Well, wait a second.
Go ahead.
Wait a second, I think we have to.
That's okay.
We all have to hear out about that.
And, and only one person.
That's okay.
And I like that as well, I mean, I know you both are very passionate about this, there's a lot of things that you guys are trying to communicate.
It's property damage, too.
I, I understand that, and there's, but I understand there's two sides of it. The one thing that I think it is, I think we've heard a great deal from you, I'm sure we're gonna hear more about this.
Oh, yeah.
There's more, there's more things that I think we want to look into as well, I think it's kind of picked some interest in people that may not have followed the whole thing as closely. And what I would ask, too, of everyone, I know there's a lot of emotions involved, and I would hope that as we continue forward in any of these conversations, like, we try to be as respectful as we can, both us to you, and you guys. both us to you and you guys to us as well, because we are doing the best we can up here. Some of the information is what we're hearing for the first time, and I think that, that kind of communication is helpful all around. So that's, that's my comment.
I think you've made, you know, we've, we've got the gist of it. And I think there'll be more questions.
Good, that's good, that's good.
So.
Ralph?
No, I, I agree, I mean, the intention is to meet with Kerry, and certainly, there's a number of things you've brought up, and certainly we're gonna ask him, and ask her for some sort of reply, a response to where these gaps are, this timeframe. To me, what's critical is just the overall timeline. So, that's gonna be my main focus when we talk, for me, so. But you did raise some other things, so.
Yeah?
Two things, um, I'm not sure this is on, if you're referring to tomorrow's agenda at 5:30 for the special meeting for pending litigation. I don't believe this topic would even be in that, because there isn't pending litigation. Um, so I'm not sure we would even legally be able to ask anything to do with this.
Respond to that when you're finished.
Sure. Um, I think tonight we already, um, one thing I don't like to see, and, and I'm going against everybody up here tonight, uh, when you allow one speaker to go longer and then you shut another one down when it gets a little tense, well, this is life. We're supposed to sit up here and we're listening, I think we're well within a timeframe. If you had a few other things to add, I'd be comfortable with it. I, I would reiterate, I think there's tension, I think everybody's being respectful. No, no, you know, I'm just being, you know, our job up here, in my opinion, is to listen. Um, and your job is to be respectful and tell us the facts, it's really that simple. Um, but back to Ralph's point, I don't believe, um, this is, I, I don't believe this can be discussed tomorrow, so if we do want to figure out a way to add it to the agenda, or, well, actually, there's not enough timeframe, because tomorrow, 5:30, it's past 5:30.
I just wanted to comment on that, Ben, and you may be right, but I was told that because there was, um, a letter sent, and it did mention potential, um, uh, action against the town, that that is pending litigation. I mean, this issue is, um, not complete, and there has been memos. Now, I, I will deal to the Selectmen as well as to, uh, our town attorney, when she comes to mouth. I'm just telling you what she told me. The other thing that I have a problem with is when people who aren't here today, and they're being spoken about, and they're not here to, number one, hear, and there's also information being said that may or may not be, um, in their agreement. So I would ask that when you speak of other people, um, that, that, actually, that you refrain from that, because I think, um, private citizens, you can speak as much as you want, certainly about elected officials, but private citizens, um, I, I would just, uh, say that I, I object to that, and I would caution you as well, because you're speaking about private citizens, um, in, in a way that can be, um, and can be interpreted as disparaging against them, so I would just-
Really?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I would be curious, so-
Hang on, please, hang on, hang on. I wanted to finish responding to Susan.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the first I heard that, you know, the, the letter you referred to, number one, I don't, I don't believe I have or have read that Kerry says, uh, and I'm assuming it's Kerry, because I'm not even sure he said that.
You received it.
Uh, that there's potential for lawsuit, it's never been discussed, and it's never been put onto any of our agendas, so I don't believe that would be on tomorrow, so.
But you did receive the letter, yes, you did.
So which ones are on tomorrow, so we're all clear and the public knows?
It's pending litigation.
Which ones are you referring to?
And I did not give a list to you, on what there are issues that are pending, um-
Just so we stay on task, could I know what those, I don't believe it's an issue to know what the issues are on the upcoming agenda.
There is a court case that is for Edin Ross Hill Road, are you familiar with that one?
Yes.
There is also, um, the, of Rocky, the situation with court, there's a court hearing on that.
Yes.
And there's also, um, I think there's another one, Ben.
Is the Main Street driveway on this one?
It will be, yes.
Any others?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, those three. So, once again, I don't believe that one-
So why can't you just add this to the agenda?
Because it were past the timeframe, you need 24 hours to add it.
You can't, no, no, they're not, they're not listed on the agenda.
Yeah, if they're not listed-
Pending litigation is not listed on the agenda, no.
Okay, well, I-
If you have questions on pending litigation, that's something that is covered on the-
That'll be my first question to the attorney.
Well, I, I mean, look at it from this standpoint. They want us to promptly look at, promptly look at this situation, so it's not gonna do any good for us to delay yet again, to have to wait to go longer to talk about it, so.
If it's legal, I'm happy with it, I just affirm believing and following the rules, so.
I agree. Jim?
No, I, I generally, as you probably noticed, don't generally talk during public comment, because I believe this is an important time for us to listen to all the residents, and I think that's the right forum for it. Um, when we have our conversations after, we can then take what we've heard and consider it, and I just think that's a good format for us to go in. We have listened, and believe me, I listen every week to what's going on, um, occasionally drive up there. Was up there earlier today, because I'm very curious to see how things are progressing, uh, based on the emails that I see, and want to be familiar with it. So I, I'm, I'm actually happy, and I'm happy it's, it's, it's not always, um, time efficient to have, you know, an hour and a half of public comment, but it's always instructive, whether it's about what's going on with Rocky, whether it's what's going up on your property. So I think it's important for us to do that. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo what Mike said, because I, and it is a concern, it does need to be respectful. Um, and I think sometimes keep it in mind, and I know you've been through a long period, I think sometimes it's easy to take in mind, we're gonna have differences of opinion, but I think a lot of folks have good motives, and whether you can see them or not, or whether you believe them in the heat of emotion or not, you know, I think everybody up here has good motives. I've watched, worked with a lot of these folks for a long time, um, so I hope everyone keeps that in mind. I know I always try to be respectful to the constituents and all the folks that I work with, and all the folks sitting on this board. Um, I just think we're better off as a community if we're all respectful to each other and try to work it through, so. General comment, not distinctly pointed one way or the other, so.
We didn't plan on getting up here during this time. We thought this was going to be part of number eight on the agenda. That is what we thought, that's what we were excited about. We thought, wow, this is awesome, it's transparent. Big mistake. And the way I was raised, that you, you treat people like they treat you.
If the Selectmen choose to have you speak under number, um-
No, I think they've heard, they've heard.
And I made that clear at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Did I not, Selectmen?
Oh, got us, got us.
All right, please. Uh, I just want to make two quick comments, and that is, um, I didn't hear any disparaging remarks about any citizens or anybody whatsoever. And the second one is speaking to Kerry Olson, she was part of the problem, you know, and, uh, she's gonna spin it to, as she has been all along, so that's not a good source to go to. Uh, the best is transparency, to have everybody in the room talking to all parties, uh, because you go behind these executive sessions, uh, you know, behind closed doors, it's opaque, and then it can be spun in any many ways, so, I mean, Kerry Olson will have her spin on it, but she, I don't believe will be, uh, have the accuracy or the integrity to put the story straight. And she put, she mentioned exhaustive efforts, which is in that article, in the River East, which is totally untrue. So just keep that in mind when, if, when you, if, when you speak with her.
Thank you.
So now, um, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room?
All right. Aaron Skelton, 170 Great Hill Road. I, uh, just, just now added a little paragraph to my agenda here. Uh, you all are familiar with the First Amendment, correct? Do I need to read it to you? No? Okay. This is public comment, people can come up here and read you cartoons if they want, and you have to sit through it for five minutes, that's fine. You know, maybe Portland will become YouTube famous with crazy people up here, maybe I'll be one of them. Uh, people can say whatever they want, hearsay is not fact. Onus is on you, the elected officials, to confirm allegations, whether it's private citizens, public officials, or Mickey Mouse, uh, whether it is fact or fib, and that's all I want to say. You are in government, please don't tread on the Constitution. Now, the main reason why I'm here, uh, is for Rocky, and I'll try to keep it as quick as possible. Um, I'm going to assume, and these are all rhetorical questions, uh, that everybody up here has been involved in a car accident, and there's a good chance that some of you were responsible. I've had a few myself, as a high school boy. Nobody came and took my vehicle away. I worked for some time, uh, doing commercial lawn mowing. I struck a rock on the shoulder of a road, went through the windshield of a car, gave a woman a few stitches. Nobody came to take the company's lawnmowers away, or rakes, or shovels, or anything else. Family member was in his boat and, uh, drove over somebody snorkeling just below the water, gave them more stitches than you would care to count. Nobody came to take his boat. I've had livestock break through a fence and, uh, bite some people. Had a horse, uh, do what's called the double barrel, if there's any questions in here. And that's two horse hooves to your chest. Sent a woman to a hospital, nobody came to take my livestock. Family business had a pothole in the parking lot, broke someone's ankle, nobody came to tear the driveway up. My parents had a sliver in their deck that gave a little, little boy at a birthday party a few stitches. Nobody came to take their deck away. Uh, when I was a little boy, I cut my thumb off, grew back. Nobody came to take my parents' knives away. See where I'm going with this? When I was in Little League, there was a group of high schoolers hitting a ball behind the field. Ball went astray and broke my ankle, nobody came to take their bats and balls. I have a friend who was an idiot, but he's a friend. He went to jail for three DUIs. He lost his license, but nobody took his Jeep away. Uh, a major contractor and, uh, and, uh, licensed in the state of Connecticut, we do work all over the Northeast. I've seen a fair share of workplace negligence, causing accidents and fatalities. I've seen a guy run over by an excavator, nobody came to take the excavator away. Paul gets in an accident, can't walk, having a crappy time. Probably should've watched his dog a little closer, but we're all human. His dog bit someone. You guys took his friggin' dog away, and you're gonna kill it. Next thing on my agenda is, uh, I want to, uh, say, it looks like our new, uh, dog park's doing really well. Um, and you're probably wondering what the hell I'm talking about. Talking about the fairgrounds, where everybody lets their dogs run off leashes. Easy pickings for us to hand out some tickets and impound some dogs. Thank you.
Paul Glenn from 385 Main Street. Uh, first thing I want to point out is that if you make any attempt to stifle anybody during the public contents, that flies right in the face of violation of the First Amendment, and flies in the face of democracy. Everybody in this room has a right to speak before the Board of Selectmen.
Selectmen agree with you, Mr. Glenn.
And it doesn't matter how long it takes.
Well, I agree.
The, uh, next thing I want to bring up is I was just handed this photograph tonight, and as we can see here, there's someone feeding Rocky a treat through the fence. For anybody that doesn't know, we have yet another act of retaliation by putting a barrier up on that fence so that nobody can do that anymore. And there is a photograph of that barrier on Facebook, for anybody that would like to look for it. If we don't want to kill a lot of time with people up here making public comments, like I'm doing right now, speaking out on behalf of Rocky, the solution to that problem and reducing the amount of time that people up here, speaking out on their issues, is to deal with those issues and make those issues go away. All we need to do in this case is rescind the kill order. And if you want proof that that can be done, look no farther than the city of Waterbury. The dog that was on death row up there has been sent back home to his owner.
You know, Mr. Glenn, I, I, could you, could you stay there for a minute? Is that okay? I just wanted to ask you about that, because I called the city, and that is not what I was told.
What, Waterbury?
Yes, I called the city of Waterbury.
Okay, well, I'm just relaying the information that I got on television news.
Well, I heard here, Mr. Page came last time and said that, and when I called the city, that is not what they told me.
Okay.
So, um-
Then somebody's not telling the truth.
If you have more information, I would like to know, because it is a very similar situation as there's a similar situation in Guilford, as there's a similar situation in many other towns.
The situation in Guilford is entirely different than this one. First of all, the situation in Guilford, the dog was on his own yard.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the details, but, but in Waterbury, I did call, and if you have more information, I would like to have that, because that is not what they told me when I called.
Okay, well, I'm just relaying what I got from television news, so I will look into that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I add something to what you're talking about?
Yes, Mr. Bell, do you want to come right up and speak? Because I did send the information to your attorney, Mr. Bell.
Yes, uh, Paul Bell, 187 Old Marlboro, Chur Pike.
And he did not, he did not answer me yet, so I wondered if you had some information on the Waterbury matter.
Well, Rosie, Rosie has been in their custody for over four years.
Right.
And she is still there, she has not been released, and they're actually waiting for the judge to make the decision regarding that case. It, it's, all these cases are a little different in some manner, however, the dog's rights are what, they don't have any rights, and that's part of-
There is, there is a potential, because this, I think, was in the paper, and was, um, perhaps on the news, Mr. Glenn, because this is what they told me when I called the city, is that situation is going to court. I think they got, uh, an extension, um, and they will be meeting, but what they're talking about is Rose, or Rosie, the dog.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're talking about the potential for rehabilitation for the dog, and that's-
She needs it.
In New York State, and that's what was in the paper.
Yeah, that's, that's been taken away.
That's been-
Because the person, the, the place that they want to take him in New York is just somebody who just randomly offered. They have no idea who's background, what background she has, if she has any training, that's why, that has been removed.
Okay, thank you.
Just, sure. One other thing, I was just gonna keep it short, one other thing I'd like to add is, you had said that it's important for, if we're gonna discuss anyone, if they're gonna be here, or, or if you're gonna discuss them, they should be here. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I always thought about this, you know, as I've, I've made the offer, like, why don't you guys come to the pound? Nobody's come down.
I went to the pound, I have gone there, and, you know, it was my suggestion, you can say whatever you please. I went to the pound. I have gone there. And, you know, it was my suggestion, you can say whatever you please.
Yeah.
But when I am the chairman of a committee or of a board, I feel it's my responsibility to say what I think is important. And I think when, when remarks are made about specific individuals, about specific matters, you as a public commenter, or I as, or anyone as a public commenter, um, there, there, you can say whatever you please, but I'm just saying you have to be aware, um,
I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I'm a hundred percent agreeing with you. You didn't know where I was going with this.
Just wanted to know that.
If we're talking about Rocky, why can't I bring Rocky here? And he could sit right by my side, he could be chained to my, my hip. I, I've got, I got muzzle, I already, I bought a muzzle as soon as I, I got him. I could put a muzzle on him. Everybody, he could sit right here, if everybody's gonna be here, making comments about him, and he could listen, he's a sentient being just like everybody else, so that's what you had just said, if, uh, you know, very explicitly and very clearly, which I understand, I'm just saying, why can't Rocky be here? I'll put him on this side of the room, far away from everybody. It makes, it sounds silly, but you just mentioned exactly what I'm just saying, so why can't he be here? So maybe for the next meeting, we can organize something, like I said. I can chain him right to my hip, he's not going anywhere. That's not necessary, but I will do that. That's my conclusion for my statements.
If you had any more information on that Waterbury case, I, I would appreciate Mr. Page contacting me on that. I just-
Okay. Any questions, or anything? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, Paul, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
So now this fence is covered with wood or something?
Not that much. It's, it's a black fencing that they, a black screening that they put, like a mesh that they put around three sides of the border on the exterior of the containment fence. And that's to stop from, there was a lady that had come by to see the dog, she was interested. I wasn't aware she was coming, it was the day that, uh, Karen was not there. And when she came to visit, this is the second time it happened, the dog snuck into Rocky, broke out of his pen and got into Rocky's pen, and they were in there just, just playing, but that's also the second dog that's done it. There was a, a Yorkie, little three-potty Yorkie that kept raking out of his pen and trying to get, and getting into Rocky's pen, because he was so small, he was able to get underneath the fence. And they would just sit together. That dog did that like three times, and I was there one time, I had Rocky laying on my chest. And it felt something tickle in my ear, and I looked over, and it's still a little Yorkie.
So did they put this other barrier up for-
They put the exterior barrier for, to stop people from sticking their fingers in there, which they didn't have a problem. And then the other thing was that the facility itself sits right in direct sunlight at certain times. There's no shade for the dogs whatsoever when it's, it's hot, especially, we had some recent period where it was incredibly hot.
This is a shade.
So, it, it's to provide shade, but it, it's, it's not like the most effective way to do that, for sure. There, you, you guys have been talking about trying to put in a, a dog park. I think you should focus on the shelter and, I mean, if you care about dogs, these are the dogs that are residents of Portland in Middletown, that they're there because they need your help. Focus on that facility first, and then the dog park or something. That, that would be my recommendation. I just-
Middletown is-
Does it need a whole ITLC? It just needs-
Uh, it needs a lot.
It does. It could, but, you know.
Okay.
And Middletown is looking at building a larger shelter.
I understand, I understand, I thought you were saying-
Right. But it does provide some shade, and Karen, our ACO, our Animal Control Officer, had requested that. I'm sorry, Karen.
That's okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Carrie, click 81 Cox Road, I don't know if you need it. Um, I just have a couple of quick comments, and this is just from sitting here and observing everything that's going on tonight. Um, for one, I think you, it's, I mean, I've only heard what you guys have said here, but it sounds to me like you guys have a really strong case. Um, good luck with it. I hope that something works out for everybody, anyway. Um, Paul, I think you should get your dog back. I think two and a half years in prison is a long time. But, um, those are just my opinions. Now, the thing that I did observe tonight is that we had talked, I don't remember who had mentioned it, about, um, keeping a certain time limit on people coming up to talk. And somebody had said something about, well, you know, give them five minutes, and then if they want, then come up again. And that didn't happen, and some young man that was here tonight obviously had something important enough that he had something typed up that he wanted to talk about, and he didn't get to. And he and, I guess his mom, I don't know, I don't know who they are, but they had to leave. And I think that we should keep that limit of time, at least for the first go-around, for everybody that wants to talk, and then anybody that wants to get back up again can. That's all.
Thank you. Yes.
What happened to your flexible ID, you know?
I don't know what else, no.
I did request him to find a used one kicking around somewhere in one of our buildings. I didn't want him to purchase it. It might have been my fault.
Annabelle Marushak, 97 Middlesex Avenue Extension, six years and 330 days till I'm a registered voter. I am here I am here yet again to talk about Rocky, a dog that belongs to Portland resident, Mr. Bell, but isn't currently living with Mr. Bell, because he was sentenced to death over two and a half years ago. I am aware that there is an upcoming pre-trial conference scheduled for August 29th that is still 28 days away. Rocky will now sit in the pound for another month while the inefficient legal system delays his release. Mrs. Bransfield, during the June 20th meeting, you stated, and I quote, "Hopefully, we will be able to reach a settlement soon." I would just like to remind you that you are the one who can make it so we reach a settlement soon. I would like to bring up once again that two of Portland's police dogs have attacked two innocent people, one being a five-year-old child just getting off her school bus, and the other being a woman walking down the sidewalk outside of the police station. Guess what happened to those two police dogs? They were not sentenced to be killed. Police dogs who had specific training, teaching them not to attack innocent people, did just that. Yet Rocky, a family pet in a stressful situation, reacted by biting a person and was sentenced to death. I'm sorry this happened to that man, and was happy to learn that his injuries only required two stitches and that he is recovering. It is my understanding that in the past 15 years, Rocky's the only dog to be issued a kill order. When I realized you were not the first selectwoman at the time, the police dogs committed those attacks. At the time, the police dogs committed those attacks, neither the ACO or the selectmen at the time found any reason to issue kill orders on any other dog bite incident. Why is Rocky's case so different? If a dog bite causing two stitches, bruises, scratching to the leg was enough to issue a kill order, certainly an attack to a five-year-old girl who endured bites to her head and left ear, lacerations to her head, puncture wounds requiring stitches and staples to her head, and bruises would want, warrant a kill order, what suddenly changed from 2002 event to 2016? I have heard people on this board afraid that if Rocky were to be released, he might hurt a child. Well, a dog has hurt a child, and that dog was allowed to live in the town of Portland and be kept in service. The lawsuit currently in Superior Court is listed as Town of Portland versus Paul Bell. My understanding is that you, Ms. Bransfield, are the representative for Portland, and therefore, this is between you and Mr. Bell, and you have the power to stop this right now. I'm asking you to please meet with Mr. Bell and work out an agreement. A GoFundMe page has been set up and is collecting donations, and lots of Rocky supporters have volunteered to help build a fence. Please let this end now, and most importantly, saving Rocky's life, and also saving the Town of Portland taxpayers' money.
I just want to point out, Mr. Bell, that you are represented by counsel. You do have an attorney that represents you.
Is that a question, or?
I, I know that Mr. Thompson Page is your attorney.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure.
What she's saying is if you have representation, she needs representation to be speaking with you. She can't speak with you directly.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to speak for Susan, but I think that's what she's-
Well, if you want to set up a date, let me know. You got my number, you got my email? I can read school signals, or, I'm, I'm good. Contact me. I've, I've reached out, I don't know how many times, so, please do. That'd be wonderful. I'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Once again, it would have to go through the attorneys if you're being represented. I, that's my belief, but-
It's all hands in the back. Yes.
My name is-
You know, someday when this Rocky thing's over, you're still gonna have to come to this meeting to keep adjusting that microphone.
I hope this ends soon, because this makes me really uncomfortable. My name is Donna Dubai. I live at 8 Penny Corner Road. And I don't like having to come here. I'm very uncomfortable with the public speaking. Um, I am in the business of saving lives, not killing them. My full-time job is for caring of patients, taking care of them, as I am a registered nurse. I've been taking care of people for 32 years, but my passion is animal rescue and fighting to end, um, animal, animal abuse and neglect and the overpopulation we, problem we have with cats and dogs and homeless pets. Um, however, since learning about Rocky's plight back in April, um, in the River East, thank you, Annabelle, for that, um, I have joined this mission in trying to resolve this issue. All I ask is that Rocky have the same chance that all the other dogs in the past with a bite history in Portland have had. They had a 14-day quarantine and went home. Rocky is the only dog in Portland that I know of in the last 15 years that has been issued a kill order. This includes Portland police dogs with extensive training that have made a mistake and have not been held to the same standard or of the same consequence, such as a kill order. I don't know if the police dog with extensive training even had a 14-day hold. I have to follow the same policies, procedures, and standards and laws when I provide care for patients. And I do expect that our Town of Portland to follow the same treatment with Rocky as every other dog in Portland with a bite history. Rocky's behavior and demeanor should be taken into consideration. He has been evaluated, um, with someone with that sort of training. Again, every single dog has the potential to bite, just like every single person has the potential to harm another human being, whether via a car accident or, we've got parents every day, I'm reading stories, that they forget their baby in the car. You know, I mean, Rocky made a mistake, Paul made a mistake, he's already admitted that. And I, I've made mistakes, I've made a lot of mistakes. I mean, we all have. And if you've, you know, had that opportunity to go back, I'm sure he would put up a fence. But I just want to know why Rocky is the only dog in Portland ordered to be killed. Since that time, two and a half years ago, there have been other dogs with bite histories that have not been held to the same standard or the same consequence. Uh, there's already been a settlement that has been reached, uh, quite substantial. Um, the dog's already been locked up for two and a half years in doggy jail. Paul has already acknowledged time and time again that he made a mistake and will put up a containment fence. Please, I ask, let's not go on for the next 10-plus years embroiled in a court battle that will cost the Town of Portland thousands of dollars. I don't think we could support a case like that. I also ask, uh, that if we are going to give out kill orders in this town, I don't think it's a good idea that we put in a Portland dog park, because we could have five of these cases going on at the same time. Um, I've been to a lot of dog parks with my dogs. I no longer take them to dog parks. I, myself, have broken up a lot of dog fights at dog parks. I know, I've watched their behavior, I know how to do it. And you'd be surprised, the number of people that don't, are not prepared and don't know how to break up a dog fight. But, um, I just don't want our town, I mean, we need to decide what we're gonna do and how we're gonna handle this. I don't think this is a good time to put, put in a dog park when we're issuing kill orders, because I can tell you, you get a bunch of dogs together, especially at the, the area of entrance, and that's when their energy, and they just snap like that for no reason. It's happened to my dogs entering. And I had to take my dog for emergency surgery, almost lost her eye. But again, I think we need to pause on that, and let's just get through this case first. And again, I just ask that, I think two and a half years of doggy jail is more than enough. And I just really plead, please, let's, let's give Rocky another chance like everybody else. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, good evening. Melissa Valenti, 19 Rome Avenue of Middletown. Um, as you all know, as of now, I'm here tonight supporting Rocky. Thank you. I just want to talk briefly. I'm not gonna hopefully go past my five minutes, trust me. Um, Mr. Shaw, did you, um, you were questioning the shade on the dog pound. Did you not see that? Have you not seen that shade?
I have not.
Would you like to see a picture?
Sure.
I'm willing to pause the clock while you find the picture.
Thank you.
Karen gets mad at me when I say, when I say, "So how's Kev X-ray doing?" You guys know what Kev X-ray is? Is McPenton will be in Cuba?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, please, if you have it. I do have it, but do you have the, the both angles on that? Oh, yeah, that's the-
They're side by side.
Yeah, that's the one that I have, this one here.
Don't be sending naughty texts.
This is the front.
Okay.
And then it goes all the way to the side.
So they have no, nobody can see in and the dogs can't see out?
That's correct. Yep.
That's what I was wondering.
Um, so, the shade, the positioning of the shade is in the front, as you all could see. That's not really even in the right position of the summer sun. The summer sun would be in the back of the pound, which you would think that it would be covering the top, not the front and the sides, if I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I mean, that really looks like a prison. You know, I, I don't know, it's-
So there's nothing over the top?
There's nothing on the top, just on the front and on the-
On the top, you'd have water collecting.
It's a temporary measure for preventing people sticking their fingers in there.
Okay, so it's a safety measure, so now nobody can-
A safety measure, I would hope a temporary safety measure- A safety measure, I would hope a temporary safety measure to provide at least some shade for the dogs. But Karen's really good with the dogs down there. She's really good. And she... If it's a hot day, they get out, they do their business, and they're back in in ten minutes. I mean, there's... We've had some really hot days. There's dogs down there with a very heavy coat, or they have black fur. And you could, you put your hand on there, it is hot.
So they can go inside though, then? They're not sitting out in the bake in the sun?
Yeah. They don't have a, like, a door access where they could fluidly go in and out?
It's either in or...
But Karen takes very big care of the dogs when they're there. It's just, it's hard, it's hard, difficult. Like Susan said, you could at least work down there.
Okay. So, and I know Annabelle was, you know, and some other folks were visiting Rocky down there. As you can see from this picture, she's giving him treats through the fence. That is no longer going to happen, correct? Can't do that anymore. This terribly upsets me to see this. I mean, it's bad enough that Rocky is in there. Now he can't even have visitors through the fence to give him treats, tell him he's a good boy. I mean, whatever the case is, this is really upsetting. On the second note, for the Waterberry issue, Susan. They have, as of yesterday, when I called Waterberry, they have twenty-five kennels. Yeah. And there's four out of twenty-five. Their kennels were full. And there are... Their kennels were full, twenty-five, all twenty-five were full. There are four, only four pit bulls remaining. I don't need to go any further with that.
What do you mean? I don't understand.
If they are not adopted within a certain amount of time, they are all euthanized. There are four pit bulls remaining in the Waterberry pound as of yesterday, out of twenty-five.
So you're saying there were twenty-five kennels filled, but now there's only...
There were all four?
There are four dogs left as of yesterday. I don't know if they were... I don't know if, hopefully, they were adopted. If they weren't adopted, they were euthanized. That's how... I mean, Waterberry is just, they're always full and...
Thank you.
Yeah. So they really have no other option, but they're...
I had only telephoned about Rosie, as far as we talked about.
Right. I mean, that's why they keep their... Adoption fees are five dollars. You know, fifty dollars if they're unneutered. And then they give you a voucher for that neuter. So that's why the cost is so small, because they are always full, sadly. And if they don't adopt them, then they're euthanized. But, um...
That is typically not the policy at our...
Right.
That's not something that...
Right. But, I mean, I honestly think, you know, Rocky should have another chance. I mean, nobody's perfect. We're not perfect. Rocky's not perfect. Paul, none of us, none of us are perfect. Give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Shirley Olson, fourteen Russell Avenue. And this is a numbers part of the discussion. Annabelle, while you were on vacation, you got another hundred votes on your petition. I did some math, and now Rocky has two point oh-four times the number of people that voted in the referendum. I find more interesting, though, that Rocky has two point oh-four times the number of votes that Mrs. Bransfield got in the last election. Altogether total, including the Republican and the Green Party candidate, Rocky got one point three times altogether. I would suggest that the selectmen, if you haven't been there, go on to Rocky's petition page because there's comments there, people can put comments in. I want to read one. This came off of Rocky's petition. From HC, she writes, "There is evidence. The person who was attacked by this dog has claimed to have been attacked before and was proved to be lying. The dog deserves a second chance. This goes to the point that there was no independent person seeing what went on at the time. There's also information out there that discusses that dogs will not attack unless they are attacked." Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
First be, I don't make a comment.
Sure.
Mark Tewksbury, three twenty-five Middle Hanham Road. Now, I realize that, you know, Rocky's in prison now and, you know, it's not good. And I'm sure a lot of people on the board don't want him out because if he ran, he might take one of your spots. But I'm just kidding. Anyway, I think it's, you know, I think it's really silly that we're here for a dog, you know?
He can have mine.
Poor little girl, Annabelle, she's been doing all this work. It's two and a half years. I mean, I don't know if people just don't have common sense these days or what the story is. You know, the poor Paul, I've known him for years. I went to school with him. He said he put up a fence, saved muzzle. It's no legal issue at all for the town liability. But I mean, it's just dragging it out and dragging it out, nobody's going to win, okay? Everyone hides behind, you know, oh, it's under, you know, whatever, litigation. You know, everyone hides behind the lawyers. They're the ones who win in this whole case. So I just wish people would be smart and just, look, make an agreement, put it in writing. Obviously, you know, make it, you know, he said he put the fence in, everything else, muzzle the thing. It's been exceptions on other dogs, obviously, so I don't know why we're trying to make a big case out of this one. You know, like I said, it's just silly, my case, but that's my two cents.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Click.
Steven Click, eighty-one Cox Road. My opinion on Rocky is if he had bitten me, yeah, I'd be pissed, I'd be upset. But he's been locked up. I would say turn him loose if he's willing to fence him in, sign off on it, saying that if the dog ever does it again, okay, then you got a right to take him out. About to kill him, and he did it once. He may never do it again. We have two dogs. Timmy's anything, worst thing to do is lick your ankles to death. But like I say, if it was me that got bit, yeah, I'd be pissed. I'd want him to compensate for pain, what our damages is and stuff like that. But I'd be willing to tell him, hey, you know, yeah, your dog screwed up, you let him out. He got himself into trouble. If you're willing to fence him in and make sure that doesn't happen, awful, sign off on it, saying that if it did happen again, that would be the second chance and the only second chance. And done deal. Take him out, I would tear him loose. On the house incident, I know where your house is, I see it up there, I see you guys working the yard and everything. Yeah, it needed to be signed off on to occupancy, move in. But I didn't hear you say when you guys bought the house. I'm on my second house now. I had an inspector come in and find out, you know, all the ins and outs, which there was a few things wrong with my house that I technically got screwed for. And it hurt. And I can see you're upset and, you know, there's a lot of emotion into it and everything like that. But what did your person say that should have inspected the house before you bought it? Because you don't want to walk in on something that's a tragedy. And you usually pay somebody yourself before you even move into the house to cover your own ass right off the line. I don't...
To your question, we were, it was recommended by the mortgage company because it was a brand-new house. It was a brand-new house, and that they can't, quote-unquote, they can't issue a seal unless everything was right.
See, you're kind of right and wrong. You, like I said, I would have got inspected anyhow, even though they said it's all right. Okay, well, that's his word, he's not moving in. Like I say, we had a few issues with our house when we bought it. We've been in town fifteen years. My dad was raised here. I spent a lot of my young youth in town. That's why we moved to this town, because I love the town, it's good people. Yeah, there's going to be some issues that you can't fix. And my opinion is you talk to the lawyers, get the two lawyers together, where the two lawyers and the... you and Susan, whoever, the whole board here, get together and just actually just calmly talk it out. And if somebody's going to be, you're going to be bringing up, oh, someone said this, and she said this, and sent an email there, she should be here to answer the questions to it. Did she or did she not?
I consider myself reprimanded.
No, I'm not reprimanding. I'm just saying, if I'm saying here, I'm saying, well, Joe Bill said all this, I would want him here to verify it. So I'm not just talking out the breeze and going, yeah, she's saying that, but she's pissed, yeah. I got someone that, you know...
Totally understood. I already texted the person.
It would just, to my, move along a lot quicker if she can actually verify she did or she didn't.
I'm sure she would be...
And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. First one, is this Paul, is this your first?
Yes.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
All right, I'm not from this town. I'm friends with Paul and every...
Kindly tell us your name.
My name's Robert Baer. I live in East Hampton. First you said that the person we're talking about should be here. And I'm pretty sure you guys are pretty intelligent, that's why you're up there. You know, every week, every time there's a meeting, we're going to be here about Rocky. And you haven't had the animal control officer here once. Now Paul continues to talk nice about her, but it's supposed to be the lady that said his dog is vicious and mean and should be dead. You know, she has to listen to you for reasons. But why is she never here? She's the one that is in charge of that, and you're in charge of her. How much training do you have for animal control officer?
I'm not an animal control officer.
And how do you have the power to tell her what she has to do?
I don't tell her what to do. She is an animal control officer. As far as animal control requirements, you're correct.
All right, so and another thing is, how many times has she bitten, bitten by Rocky? Because she handles him every day, in and out. So if he's so vicious, how come she hasn't got bit? I mean, you understand what I'm saying here? I mean, I don't know what Paul did to you, or there's obviously something.
Excuse me?
There's obviously, Paul must have did something to you.
Paul couldn't do anything.
But you're out to get just him. And it's a little, you guys, I know you have to respect her, and we all do, but enough's enough with your power trip. Everybody's afraid of you and won't talk up, and they want to put a time limit. I mean, I've seen him do it tonight, he's talked back, so I know he has the balls to do it. But, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, but enough's enough. Your power trip's over. You got voted in by the people, and I don't think you're going to be voted back in. It's simple to make it go white, and you're... We want to talk about time, somebody brought up time? You'll get a lot more time back if you just release Rocky. It's pretty simple, right? You guys could have plenty of your time. It's common sense, you guys are very intelligent people, that's why you're on board. Start using your head.
Any other comments? Shirley. Miss Olson.
You commented in relation to the ACO writing the kill order. It appeared in the River East with the Portland dog on Death Row that she had been interviewed by the River East and said that she had been pressured by the town attorney and the first select woman to write the kill order.
I was confused when I asked her if she had achieved that. That's a big decision to make.
I will keep my, uh, my, uh, comments, no comment. I'm not going to comment to that. Any other comments?
Could I, could I just say something, one thing before we guess we're done, right? I know everyone's impassioned about this, and I've said it before, you know, we're still trying to... You know, we're meeting tomorrow, we're going to get more information about this situation. But it still ultimately comes down to that all of us represent ninety-three hundred people. So I understand what you say, but we're making a decision for ninety-three hundred people, not the thirty people that show up consistently at our meetings. So our decision has to be made for everyone, not just this small number of people that are speaking behind, on the behalf of Rocky. And I'm not saying either way, one way or the other, I'm just saying ultimately, the decision we have to make has to be what's best for the whole town. And that's how, you know, that has to be kept in mind.
Please keep in mind that Rocky has opened a point of order. Yes, point of order, thank you. Mr. Zampano has the floor.
So I just want to make that point. And, you know, you know, we're going to certainly look at the situation and try to make the best judgment, so...
Susan, one more person.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Yes.
The one that doesn't like to speak. That's okay, we'd like to hear you.
Donna Dubay, eight Penny Corner Road. I just think we need to remember to be respectful to everybody that's up here. And we just have to state our facts and, or state the facts and state how we feel on this. And again, Rocky represents all the dogs in Portland. And, you know, I think this is going to make a big push to get the laws changed. I think we need that, I think they need to be updated. But again, just, everybody, just try to be respectful. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only thing I want clarification for tomorrow's meeting, if I may. Shirley, I try not to read the River East too much, they bash me quite a bit. So could you restate what you said so I get this correct? You said something that I wrote to the effect that the town attorney and town officials, were those your words?
No, the town attorney and the first select woman.
Okay.
And it appears...
Finish, finish what you said so I have it correct for tomorrow's meeting.
The town attorney and the first select woman.
And I believe you said she felt pressured?
Oh, yes, she felt pressured.
And what's her name again? Okay. Felt pressured. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I don't think Mr. Bauer has arrived. Andy isn't here. So we will not be having the information on the solar project tonight. So we'll move on to enforcement. And is Mr. Serv asked this to be put on the agenda? I did prepare then some information about enforcement for the selectmen, and I, it's at your table. Did point out that certainly we've been talking about certain parts of our laws over the last several weeks. I brought with, with us tonight is the book of ordinances that the town has, the town charter, which is here, union contracts, we have personnel rules, policies that, this should be in your pack. Do you have it, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
As well as all HIPAA rules that we have to follow, and state laws, which are pretty much are codified in volume two, title seven. And in addition, within the schools, the Board of Education has rules and regulations, as well as state laws that they adhere to. Within the area of health, the Chatham Health District is our designated health director and health officials. And they have a number of regulations that they have as adopted by the Board of Health. There is the state health code enforcement that has to be followed. Right now, the state requires that the Federal Drug Administration, the FDA Food Code, for all restaurants and events is used. We also have a housing... all restaurants and events is used. We also have a housing code. Within public works, there are laws associated with local rights of way, driveways, and town roads and road regulations, which are identified up here as well. Within the building, there are building codes by the state, the state building code, and also within our building department, the light regulation is enforced. Within fire department, the fire marshal is the state fire code that is followed. Within planning, there is the plan of conservation and development, as we all know. In terms of zoning, there's regulations that are written, and I brought a copy of those. Inland wetlands also have laws and rules. Within the town, there are enforcement officials, and those would be police, the zoning enforcement officer, the inland wetland enforcement agent, the fire marshal, the registered sanitarian from the health district, the town engineer. And public works have certain authorities that they can exercise, as well as within the finance department, finance director, as identified in the charter, also has enforcement powers. Within the boards and commissions, there is oversight. The selectmen are oversight for many, many of these matters, as well as the Board of Education, all education matters. The inland wetlands commission, the Board of Health oversees the health district, the Board of Assessment Appeals oversees assessment and appeals that are made. Planning and zoning, rules on all planning and zoning applications. The zoning board of appeals listens to appeals to zoning. Within the housing code, there is a board of appeals. We don't have officials actually on that board, but it does exist, as does the building code board of appeals. And we also have a citation hearing ordinance, of which there are officers that oversee the citation hearings. Within the state, there is oversight and permitting of towns. And examples of that are the state fire and building code boards of appeal. There's also the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, which oversees, among many things, in cities and towns flood management and national diversity database. The Department of Transportation oversees and gives permits for, in particular, all areas associated with state roads. The State Health Department also has authority over the towns, as does the State Office of Consumer Protection for a lot of rules associated and a lot of businesses. Also, the Office of Policy and Management oversees quite a bit of items, including audits and budgets and other items within cities and towns. Department of Agriculture oversees animal control. The Department of Public Safety, for one thing, besides many that they do, they do oversee and issue handgun, gun permits. And the Connecticut Human Rights and Opportunities Commission also has oversight over many items, as do other commissions within the state that I didn't list here. And then, of course, the State Superior Court is where lawsuits are filed, of which there are always much activity within our courts. I also provided for the selectmen, and this is on our website, all of the various people who are elected to the Board of Ed and selectmen, as well as the town clerk, the Board of Assessment Appeals, the zoning board of appeals, building code, and so forth. I won't list all of them. The Ethics Commission that was mentioned earlier tonight, there are five members of that board that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And the Economic Development Commission, the Housing Authorities is appointed by this board, Library Board of Directors, Long Range Capital, Parks and Rec, the Planning and Zoning Commission is appointed by this board. They oversee all of those roles, senior citizens, Water Commission, and the Youth Service Advisory. So I just wanted to repeat what you may already know, but I think it's important. If there are areas that the selectmen wish to review, we certainly can meet with other boards and commissions that have oversight and enforcement authority over many, many, many of these areas. You can also rewrite ordinances. And on occasion, we do that. And we have had the Ethics Ordinance on our agenda for many months. And we have also had other town updates needed within our, in our ordinances. It's something that I think that we should routinely look at. Also, the subdivision regulations are here and the zoning regulations, which were rewritten recently. All of our labor contracts, there's three up this coming year. And one of the pension agreements is up. You're welcome to sit in on those as well. And the charter and the road regulations and the regulations associated with the water division are listed here at the table. So what I wanted to point out is all of the various controls and enforcement areas that we have in place. And I just would ask you to continually review these things. And we're beginning, at any point, to work on things that you feel are important to do. And I'll open it up.
Sure. I only had one, one follow-up.
Sure.
Seeing that we now have the Sataj driveway on tomorrow's executive session.
I have to verify that, Ben?
No, I think everybody here tonight, I think Ralph made it clear, it's on the agenda.
Well, I mean, obviously, I misstated something, but I mean, I would, I would think it should be, but.
We got two. Who else? We just need one more. But, well, I've been told.
But it depends on.
Yeah. Well, I've been told in tonight's meeting that it potentially could be on tomorrow's and so that's where I'm going.
Okay.
You mentioned, Melissa, you had mentioned that you weren't included in a negotiation with a neighbor on the same driveway issue. Is that what you were saying? I wanna have my, I wanna know what to write down here for tomorrow.
Absolutely. There was a conversation, I'm not gonna get into the details.
Correct. Please don't. Yeah.
That you could be right.
No, I just wanted.
But I do know that the town's attorney reached out to one of the other folks that was a co-defendant on the Kelly V, Portland ZBA.
Yep.
And we did not, we were, we did not receive anything.
You were not included?
Nope. But I know if the water takes a hard break. But we were not included.
It gives me, you know, now I can ask some questions, but, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
Kind of pertains to the Sataj driveway, but it also pertains in, in general. We have a zoning enforcement officer. And if I'm not mistaken, when that driveway was going in, he went up, the, the then zoning enforcement officer went up there and put, issued a cease and desist order?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so what I don't understand is, if the town says you can't do that, and that was like six years ago, what?
Twenty thirteen, the, the appeal process allows for, and I don't wanna get too specific, but in terms of procedure.
Yeah, well, I just am curious how it, how it works, in general.
Well, when a, sure, sure. When a zoning enforcement officer issues a cease and desist, in fact, he issued two, two in a row, for this particular matter. And that's, that's on the record. Then, if the compliance doesn't occur, there can be an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Ben Serv was on the zoning board of appeals at the time. And so he'll verify that that did come to the zoning board of appeals.
So Kelly, the, or the one that.
The person.
Yeah.
Yes.
They can go to zoning board of appeals?
They can appeal the decision of a zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
There were a series of meetings held on that. There can be a series of meetings. And then the zoning board of appeals either upholds what the zoning enforcement officer says, or they deny it, or they say no, that you're wrong, and the appeal is, is, is approved.
Yeah, granted, okay.
And from that point, if the zoning board of appeal affirms what the zoning officer has issued, then the person that had the zoning offense.
Violation.
Violation. They can then appeal that to Superior Court, right then? So once they go to court, then that takes us a lot of time.
Unless a settlement's reached.
Because the court, I'm sorry?
Unless a settlement's reached, correct.
Because the court schedules these things, and it takes a long time.
And then can, can the case then get appealed? After, in other words, if you, if.
I think it conceivably can, yes. Yes, it conceivably can. And that's the case for a lot of these matters. What the courts like to see is that a town, if it issues an order for many of these issues that I talked about a few minutes ago, they're appealed to a board that is in your local jurisdiction. So if that appeal is, is denied, then it can go to court. And then from that point, if the court decides that the appeal is not justified, then that can be appealed again. It can go through another, another series. Or there can be mediation, and there can be a decision made among the parties. And then the court typically blesses that or says, yes, that's on the record, and that's something that would be enforceable if it, if things don't occur down the road. Or if the parties agree, it's, it's, that's settled. I know, Ben, you were on the ZBA. Did you wanna add anything as far as process is concerned? Not the particulars, but anything on the process that I might've missed?
Melissa hammered on me pretty good back then to make, you know.
I did.
You know, in all fairness, but we did what we felt was right at the time. I think the four did.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know if there was anything else in terms of the process.
But the uneven enforcement part, since you, they let, they let Kelly, they let Kelly go through this.
Point of order, do you want, do you want conversation?
Uneven enforcement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with hearing that.
Wait a minute, doesn't the public get to speak again later?
Point of order, no.
But we also, hang on.
Point of order, it's up to the selectmen.
Correct.
Do you want to allow this to continue? Is a revote, a motion to approve conversation back and forth?
I'm fine if it's reasonable. And we, it's either gonna be under public comment or not.
Is there a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to allow people to speak.
Is there a second?
All right, I'll second it. Thank you.
Discussion?
As long as.
I think it should wait till the public comment.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I kinda kept track of it. We had about an hour and forty minutes of public comment. Half of that was the front half of this issue. I think this is good for us to have a discussion. We do have another public comment session coming up.
Am I next?
Yes.
I think, I think we put it on the agenda for a reason. I think we should have discussion. I don't think there's any harm in it. If it's out of control, we have, we have remedies. So I would allow it. I'm fine with it. I think we make it worse by trying to delay it.
More discussion. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm fine if it's brief. We're, we're just trying to.
All right, but we have to have, we have to take a vote. So all in favor of, of Ben's motion, which is to allow the back and forth? Aye?
Aye.
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 Four, motion passes.
Do you want us to go up there?
Please, mistake your name.
Melissa Gerrier Sataj, 111 Collins Hill. Oh, Collins over.
Robert Sataj, 111 Collins Hill.
The reason that I jumped in, again, the re, the reason for my coming forward to and requesting that uneven enforcement be placed on the agenda was because there is the, the different steps that someone can take if they want to appeal. They can go to the courts and everything else. We were told repeatedly by the selectwoman and the attorney that we had to wait. And that's why we, that's why I jumped on board to be part of a defendant, because I wanted to be part of the process. I wanted to be kept in the loop. And I also wanted my voice heard. That's not the case. That's not what's happening with this other family. This other family has not exhausted their appeals. As a matter of fact, in the River East, and I made sure to write it down very carefully, and there's also, you can find it right on their site. It's in the, in their archives. The town's attorney states, "The town wants the court to force a defendant to stop a certain behavior regardless of the avenues for appeal or alternative, alternative solutions that may be available." And then she went on to say, "If the town can't file a lawsuit in cases like this, it puts every municipality at risk." So what makes them so different? Why is this so uneven? It doesn't make sense to me. And it probably doesn't make, it makes sense to them either. And that's what I struggle with. I've always struggled with the uneven enforcement here. I don't understand it. I'm not from here. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, Ms. Bransfield just read a, a list of controls and enforcement that took about five minutes. You go into town hall, there's maybe, I don't know, six employees. Where are all these people with all these controls and commissions and, I mean, it's like they're in the, in the cloud or something.
A lot of the commissions, Mr. Sataj, they're volunteers. They're not work, they're not employees. They're volunteers.
Right. Okay, but where are they assessable? I mean, but you don't have to answer that. More importantly, you know, with regard to zoning enforcement, a zoning enforcement officer, he filed a cease and desist, and it wasn't enforced initially. I believe it was Bob Spencer. I believe he actually went to file a suit at some point to have it enforced.
The cease and desist is done, is not filed with the courts. It's not like Bob and I can go down to the courts and say, look, there's a cease and desist. Give us a court order so he stops it. It's not how it works. We have to go out and hire an attorney to go and be our own zoning enforcement.
We were pushed to file a lawsuit to get this done.
This was, I mean, that, no, that's the first time.
File a lawsuit?
No, no, no. That's, he's referring to one. We had to file a lawsuit to get our houses back.
Your other lawsuit.
The other lawsuit that we won, yes.
Okay, so with regard to the zoning enforcement, your controls that you just spouted over here for five minutes, the zoning, a zoning enforcer never showed up. Never seen a zoning enforcer since Bob Spencer.
Correct.
And throughout these meetings with Kelly, there was no zoning enforcement ever present, period.
Nope.
They, they, and Kelly was supposed to be present at meetings for negotiations. He never showed up. So there's inconsistency on your controls. You read them off, it's very impressive. And the same goes for the Ethics Commission, appointed by the selectmen. How long has that chairman been in there? He represents many of the, many clients who, these cases revolve around ethical issues.
That's you then, right? So should be aware of that.
What's that?
Oh, I, I, I read the judicial website religiously. It's my go-to, because that's where I get information. That's where I have to go for my information. The River East, and I go to the judicial website.
I invited you, Ms. Sataj, to come in, and I wanted to go over this with you.
It's Gerrier Sataj, that's my.
Ms. Gerrier Sataj.
Thank you.
I did invite you twice to come in, and I wanted to go over this with you. And you preferred to do it.
You wanted to do it one-on-one.
Yeah, I was willing.
No. I want it in front of these selectmen.
That's fine.
Because they need to hear what you say during those meetings. They need to see you grab your head and go, why do you put me on the defensive? They need to see that. They need to see that this is not, this is not just for their little show.
I am not arguing with you. I just wanted to make a point.
Well, I'm making my point as well. You will not shut me up. You will not put me in a corner and make me talk to you.
All right, let's.
Is this appropriate speech for the board?
No, I'm all set.
Do you agree with this?
I'm all set.
Lord, I wanna know if you agree with this type of speech at our, at our podium.
You've spoken, you've spoken, I've spoken.
Okay, okay. No, I don't agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm cutting on the beer.
That will not be allowed by this board. Is that correct?
I will go home and write it up a hundred times.
I, Board of Selectmen, I am trying to run an efficient meeting. But we need to have some control over this meeting.
I'm really disappointed, aren't we?
You're out of order, Ms. Gerrier Sataj.
I am out of order. And so are you.
Do you wanna overrule me, Board?
Nope, don't know.
Is that unanimous? The next item is the monthly budget report, which you have. You have the many-page report. And you also have in front of you a press release that Tom had asked me to send to you. And I think the last time we had read, the global ratings assigns a double A-plus rating to the town of Portland, Connecticut. S and P Global Ratings assigned a double A-plus rating to the town of Portland's general obligation debt. This rating is the highest achieved by the town since nineteen ninety or earlier. We're very proud of this, and I think it's a testament to our town. We're very proud of this, and I think it's a testament to our town. The AA+ rating is the second highest available rating from S&amp;P, with AAA being the highest. This rating is the equivalent of two levels higher than the AA3 outstanding rating from Moody's Investor Service. The rating reflects S&amp;P Global's opinion that the town's economy and most financial indicators are very strong. On the economy, S&amp;P sees the town's location in the Hartford metropolitan area, combined with above-average income levels and a growing tax base, as contributing to a very strong local economy. On finances, S&amp;P cited the town's available reserves, liquidity, and debt position as very strong. First selectwoman said that doing the things that resulted in a strong rating have not been easy in this uncertain fiscal environment. Many people in the town deserve the credit for this rating. Town boards made this possible through their willingness to cooperate and communicate in order to further the best interests of the town. Town staff, and particularly Finance Director Tom Robinson, made this possible through their hard work and professionalism. S&amp;P Global Ratings released this rating in advance of the sale of $10 million general obligation bonds by the town on July 18 that will finance construction of Portland Town Park, reconstruction of streets, sidewalks, and improvements to town buildings. And on the other side of the paper is a more recent feeling. The town of Portland has taken bids on $10 million in general obligation bonds. These bonds, which were approved by the voters in November 2016, will finance the construction of Portland Town Park, reconstruction of streets and sidewalks, and improvements to town buildings. The town received a winning bid of 3.113% true interest cost from Fidelity Capital Markets. The town had also received bids from Robert W. Baird and Roosevelt Cross. According to First Selectman Susan Bransfield, this favorable interest rate was based in part on the AA+ rating that the town received on the bonds from S&amp;P Global Ratings. We are also conservative in our projection of interest rates. Our initial projections two years ago had the cost of the financing at between 3.5% and 4.5%. We are also able to structure the debt so that it worked within already existing debt to make a minimal impact on the mill rate for our residents and businesses. So Tom wanted to be sure you had that. Any comments or questions on that? What did you say?
I was saying, very good news.
Yeah.
Very good news.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I got a question.
Yep.
When these bids have come in already?
Yes.
These three agencies?
Yes.
But we haven't selected one yet.
No, the, yes, we did. The fidelity was the low bidder. So things are proceeding.
And they received the job.
And the monthly budget report is one month, of course, for the month of July, so there's not a whole lot of information there, but you're welcome to review and make comment to, you can either call Tom, or he'll be at our next meeting in September, the first meeting in September. Are there any appointments to Boards and Commissions tonight? That's why I gave you the list, so that you'll know where there are some vacancies. Please feel free to put some names forward. Refunds of excess payments?
I'll run through them.
Jim?
Make a motion to refund $55.62 to Edmund J. Nusarid Jr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
Make a motion to refund the amounts of $90.88 and $13.80 to Joshua L. Neville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $60 to Hannah and Gregor's Goot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $70.73 to George M. Rosenfeld.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
And make a motion to refund $16.59 to Clayton B. and Lynn Marie Major.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Any status reports tonight?
Well, I guess I'll speak first. I'd say that with regards to the park, it looks like today they were doing some work, so we had a few bumps along the way on permitting, but I think we're all good, and I would expect the process to roll along. And Kitch, I see you out there, and I was thinking of, I had printed off, I know you asked me at one of the meetings about the dog park location potentials, printed them off for tonight, and they're sitting on my printer, so I will catch up with you or I have a meeting with Ellis.
Anyone else?
Just, we did have a couple of more meetings of the Water and Search Subcommittee, collecting some data from surrounding towns, taking a look at where we are budget-wise. We're now trying to get some additional information on actuals versus budget to see how everything has grown now that we've, you know, gotten into another fiscal year. So we're continuing to work on that effort.
Anyone else? Okay, public comment. Ms. Olson?
Hi, Shirley.
Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm good.
I feel for the Satages. And Tim, I know, has been there, and I know that there's other members of the board that have been down to the park, Middle Sixth Avenue Park. It's been 10 years since the first request was made to the Chatham Health District to look at it. It was 10 years. But we have a $6 million park out on Route 17, but we have a park that's on Middle Sixth Avenue that takes care of biz recesses, lunchtime recesses, physical education, the program that the nurse has for jogging, walking, and running. We have down there, we won't have football practice anymore, but there'll be soccer practice down there. There's soccer games down there, and there are lights on that field. And we have parents, mothers, fathers, coming down to the area for the kids to practice doing different things, or just running around down there. And we have people walking the whole perimeter, all the way around it. There was one man that did it 10 times every day for his exercise. But there's actually been very little done to that area down there. And what was done last year with taking out some of the trees and everything, it's got to be done over again, because the stuff, the roots weren't taken out by the company that did it, and those whatever that grow all over everywhere are there.
Bittersweet.
Bittersweet. Yep. And the most, Carl Johnson has been absolutely fabulous in trying to help, especially when there's been critical problems. But the most help that I've gotten from a government entity was deep. I contacted deep about an issue. I learned that it was an immediate health risk to children, and I was sent all the literature and to whom I could send my letter to, and in addition to the person who was notified, who was not the selectwoman, they were there and they took care of it in a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph, did you have any?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. There's funding there to do the work, it's just that in between those years, we did lose funding because of the cuts that were done to the state, so it's not that there isn't funding there.
It's a big safety issue, and further, there had been a plan by the Capital Commission for the Capital Commission.
Ralph has the floor, Ms. Olson. Ralph has the floor.
We've had a plan for several years now. The plan's sitting there, the plan is to be executed. That's not changed, so I don't, nothing has changed with the plan. The plan is still there. The funding, we've been able to recover some of the funding that we lost from the state, as far as we know, and we're trying to be proactive to use the funding, because we're obviously afraid of losing the funding from the state, because you never know. So, you know, there is work that is going to be done this fall, and that's, the plan is there.
If you have further comment, Ms. Olson, would you please?
Thank you. Because when all this was going on, the Capital Commission had recommended that the park on Middle Sixth Avenue be taken care of first, but no, we had to have the referendum question, and it had to be commingled with the infrastructure. You think we're stupid?
The two items are mutually exclusive, so I don't know.
Excuse me, do you agree with Selectmen? Do you want this to continue?
No, I don't.
All right, that's it.
This has been typical.
Is there any other comment? Kitch, did you have comment?
Yes.
Kitch, Breon, Sernicki, 435 Main Street. I'm here for a couple of reasons. I've served on council where there have been two opportunities for public comment. The first allowed at 3.5 to 4 minutes, the second was a follow-up of fewer minutes, less time. It seemed to work out quite nicely. At that time, meetings were televised live, and a population fully engaged in government would sometimes come down to make comment at the second time for public comment, so, I mean, there are a lot of options out there. I guess, I guess I look at this meeting tonight with a sense of sorrow, with the tone of it, with the comments made, that I felt very often were ad hominem attacks. I understand people feeling with their gut about issues that affect them. I've been in that position, whether it's a driveway, whether it's a dog. But I think that in every instance, there should be respect for the people who serve, they volunteer their time, and for the people who sit on the other side, who are angsty about the decisions that are being made. I also think that each of you sitting there has an obligation to support each other. You serve on the same body, and you should have a united front. And I don't say these words lightly, but it's hard to sit in this audience tonight and watch what has happened. It reflects poorly on Portland. I think you need to find some way to stand together, to be a united voice. Certainly, your opinions, your voices matter, and you cannot, you don't have to look at everything the same way, but you have to support each other. And I'm going to ask you to please try to do that as you move forward. Your opinions can be different, but you're one body, and you represent all of us, 9,300 or so people. Please do it with a modicum of respect for each other and for us. Ralph, this question's going to be specifically to you, because you're allowing engagement. I also asked, and then read in the paper at the groundbreaking, that the park was going to have a circuit and a walking trail and a concession stand. I know those were in the first releases, and then recently you've said that those things aren't going to happen. Are they going to happen or not?
So again, as I stated when we last spoke, because I can't account for what was written, because I wasn't asked about what was written. But again, the walking trail and the rec barn are right now tentatively put on hold to see if we're going to have enough contingency. The concession stand, all along has been the same state, was to build a shell, not to populate it with the equipment, but to build a shell so that it actually could be used for concessions. It just may not be heated concession. So the plan is to come up with a way to fund that effort secondary. So the concession stands there. Again, as I noted, the, those other two things are, they're certainly on the board, but we have to see how, they're all tied to the contingent, the contingency that we want to reach, which is 5% for the project, so.
The, another issue that I have, excuse me, go ahead.
I just want to make sure we're clear. The walking trail, the paved walking trail is in place.
Oh, did you, I'm sorry, did you say walking trail as well?
That's still in place.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that item.
I asked about the walking trail and the circuit as well.
Yeah, the walking trail and.
The exercise equipment.
Exercise circuit.
The circuit is the item that is tentative right now. The walking trail has not changed.
Okay. The other question I had has to do with, to you, Susan, is there going to be a follow-up meeting on the speeding in town? Has that been scheduled as of yet?
Likely after Labor Day, it hasn't been scheduled yet. One thing that we're doing, Kitch, is we're looking at the potential of putting a stop sign, not to control speeding, but to make sure that traffic is safe in a couple of locations on High Street and on Freestone Avenue at East Main. But before any stop signs can be in place, the uniform, I forget what the acronym is, but it's basically the uniform design for stop signs and other signs requires that you have an engineer take a look at the intersection to determine if there will be a stop sign there or not. So Bob Shea's in the process of having that looked at, and then we'll make the determination, and I will as the local traffic authority, determine whether there'll be a stop sign there or not, if it's warranted. If it's not, then we will not be putting stop signs. The other thing that we're looking at is enhancing the crosswalks that have faded over the last year, and Bob is going to put in, it's sort of an iridescent or reflective paint for the crosswalks. He's going to do that, and that will, I've asked him to make sure that gets done before school starts. So there will be something after Labor Day, and the police are keeping up with enforcement, which frankly, is probably the best thing in terms of effectiveness, and that's enforcement of the speed limits.
So then would you be willing to pass along that between 5:30 and 7:00 a.m., Main Street seems to be like a raceway?
Sure.
Thank you.
I will tell them.
To sewer and water, when you spoke with other towns about what they're doing and how they're charging or what their rate is, did you also speak to them about how they're collecting old or outdated fees?
It was, what we've done, information was collected and provided to the committee. It's written information, it wasn't live conversations with each other authority, so.
Did you ask for any of that to be included?
You know, I do have not read through it all. It's a decent packet, so I'm not sure if any of it's in there, but if it's not, that's a good idea. We have talked about that subject, we have looked at the accounts receivable list, things of that nature, to try to stack it in an idea and get our hands around that as well.
Okay, because I know, I think that maybe some towns have a mechanism where they can collect the monies that are old, dated out, 30, 60, et cetera.
Yeah, and we do. I believe it's done through, you know, continued billing, and I believe ultimately it goes to liens, but it's, you know, it's, do we still have an accounts receivable list, so.
Okay. And then finally, for the special meeting you're having tomorrow evening, Susan, you talked about three topics that are on an agenda that has been noticed.
It's actually, Kitch, it says pending litigation is what it says, if I'm not mistaken.
So you left the topic open so that it could be any pending litigation?
I believe that's the way the agenda is set. Do you know differently?
I just, I'm under the impression that you can't add another pending litigation this evening without having been noticed separately.
No, we're not, we're not. You're right. And there is no executive session tonight.
Right.
And I tried my best to keep conversation and warning that we don't discuss pending litigation in open session. litigation in open session.
Uh huh.
To protect the town.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think that's it. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Kitch.
Aaron Skelton, 170 Great Hill Road. Just something I forgot before. I've mentioned it a few times now. I, as well as others, are very happy to help Paul put a fence in. I mentioned I'm a major contractor in Connecticut. Putting a fence in is kind of a small change for us, but just to show good faith, if I email my phone number, if you need a plan that would help. I dropped out of college, so there's one card to throw to all of you. You know, it's, it's not just words. I could have a fence up by morning if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I miss you up here. Kitch was leaving, so I wanted to thank her, tell her I miss her up here. Bye, Kitch.
I'll just be a minute here.
Okay. Mr. Murphy will be next.
I just wanted to apologize for the misinformation I let out before about the dog in Waterbury. That was the story that I got from either Channel 61 or Channel 3 News. That's the way it was reported, and I stand corrected.
Well, I think, Mr. Glenn, you bring up a good point, thank you for getting up, but newspapers and media is how we do get information, and it's not always a hundred percent in terms of fact. So I appreciate you coming up and letting us know. Thank you for your information. Mr. Murphy?
Dave Murphy, 40 Caristall Drive. Just a quick update, because I know some may not be updated. I've been talking with Dr. O'Reilly all summer. One of the things I've been passionate about, and we've talked about in prior meetings, is the windows. They have been ordered, they're expected to be here in the next week to ten days, I believe. We've actually got the bids on the removal, and that's going to be moving forward, and the numbers are all coming in right now, right about what we expected. Could go slightly over, because there's some weird thing with a clock because it's got asbestos in it, you're going to have some special company come in, so it could go over a few thousand. Right now, it's under a couple grand, so that's good. So Dr. O'Reilly feels, fingers crossed, that we could get this done before school starts, so just want to share some good news, you know, that this is going to be done, if not before school, within the first couple of weeks.
Awesome.
That's great.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for working with us on that day.
Give me half of that money and a bucket of rocks, I'll take them out there.
You can take a lot of credit on that too, Dave.
And Dave, thank you for the Board of Ed working with us on that. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Then we'll move on to Board of Selectmen, general informal discussion. Is there anything that?
I was just going to, last time we met, we talked about the recycling center, and I just did a little figuring out of some of the things as far as the permit goes. Right now, it's twenty dollars. I'm not sure how many people use the facility, but if you raised it five dollars, I think that probably would be okay. The one thing I think you have to keep in mind is that if you increase the cost of the bags, even though it doesn't sound like much, a dollar a week, it's fifty-two dollars a year. If you look at a private hauler, they get about three hundred and fifty-two dollars a year. If you were to use the medium-sized bags at four dollars a bag, and you had a permit of twenty-five dollars, it would be two hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I think if we inch that up too far, we will be, I think people will finally say, well, I'm not going to do it myself because I can have someone else do it for the same price. So, and as far as the other permits and as far as the hauling, I have a few questions for Bob Shay as far as, you know, how do you determine a commercial vehicle? Are trailers a commercial vehicle, are pickup trucks a commercial vehicle, or it's only commercial businesses that have trucks? And how do you determine that? So those are just questions I have.
Sure.
I like your two cents on raising a certain fee, and I just like to be uniform. So whatever we do, it should be uniform, because, you know, I brought up all my other points, we don't need to get into that, but I like uniformity, at least we can stand behind it. And I truly, and I didn't realize, you know, and I don't know if he said it in the meeting or after the meeting, he said a lot of it is the wood chips now, we have to dispose of them in a different manner, and that's what's driving up this, so I don't know if there's another way we can use our wood chips to keep them in town on, you know, certain banks, Susan, or if there's other ways we can utilize them and not then have to pay to have them hauled out or whatever, I don't know what they're doing with them, but.
Yeah, I don't know what the rules are on that, because as you know, as they decompose, they can go on fire, depending on the depth of them, so I know that there's a requirement that they follow.
And for the record, I don't bring any wood chips in, just so. But I think that those are all good questions when we get there, but whatever we end up doing, I believe it should be uniform, and I also agree with you, we shouldn't go too crazy and push people out of the Portland dump market, sorry, transfer station.
I thought, I thought, sorry, I thought those chips were an environmental kind of rule, but I don't know, we could ask them.
Yeah, I don't know enough, but I was shocked to hear that we're transporting those out. There has to be a better way, and I'd like to look into that, and maybe that could save our costs, and we can keep the fees where they are for the residents, you know, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Rick?
It's a little bit what Shirley was talking about, about that park on Middle Sixth Avenue.
Yep.
I've taken the time to walk around it, and there is a lot of poison ivy. Well, I walked around it, it was probably before Fourth of July, so I don't know if maybe somebody got there and cleaned it up, but poison ivy, bittersweet, just sort of junk growing on the perimeter. But when the kids are running around there or playing ball or something, it's certainly conceivable that they're going to end up going to fetch a ball and get into the poison ivy and get tangled up into that crap, and it's just, I would ask that maybe we make an effort with our grounds crew to just get down there and clean it up. I mean, here, we're devoting all this time and attention to our new park, which is, which is fine, but we need to take care of what we already have, and that's right in the center of town, where there's some population density, and it's near the school. I mean, I didn't even realize that the school, I mean, they use it for their playground, so I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, I'll speak to Carl Johnson about that.
And I'll note, I did speak to Carl about it. I remember, a few weeks ago, we had a conversation because I was probably off of something Shirley had said. I said, you know, I'm hearing that the growth is once again up on that bank, you know, are we going to take care of it? He said, no, I'll get the guys out and we'll take care of it now. I don't know.
Well, stuff's growing like crazy this year, too, and it's hard getting rid of bittersweet and poison ivy because they have the underground.
Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, I've sat up here for a few years now, we've done it before, correct, Susan? We've pruned that back before, cut it back, I remember something down there, right?
Well, we've done, we've done a lot down there, as you've seen. I mean, Carl has done a tremendous job down there in terms of cleaning up some of the trees that needed to come down and some of the other debris, so to say that there's been a substantial amount of work down there is correct, there's been a substantial amount of work. This is on the perimeter.
I was very firm, yeah, to the perimeter.
And I would wager, there's a lot of our parks, that on the perimeter, we need to attend to weeds that grow up.
Yeah.
And because children are there, they cannot use any chemicals.
I know.
They cannot use any pesticides, it's pesticide-free zone, so they can't do that. So I will speak again with Carl and ask him to attend to that.
So if you can't.
But I think it grows so fast, as you're saying.
Well, it does, and it's almost like you have to pull it out by the roots to get it really, well, you're a contractor.
Yeah, the other alternative, if he's already doing it, if you do it once a year, cut back, or twice a year, cut back, at least it starts to be manageable. I have a feeling it was more, it probably wasn't done for years, and Carl went in there and did all an extensive amount of work, like Susan said. It will get easier, I hope, and if I'm speaking out of church, somebody can correct me, but it should be a lot easier for Carl to now, you know, whether, if we instruct twice a year, whatever, whatever it takes, it would be much quicker, much easier than just letting it go out of control. I've explained it to people over the years, it's a lot cheaper to just run a big brush hog through a couple of times a year than it is to let it get out of control and then try to deal with it. You would spend five times, if not ten times, as much with that philosophy. So if it is a goal of this board, I think it's pretty easy to come up with an obtainable, run the machine through, and it's a lot easier on the guys, they don't even have to get out of the machine.
Yeah, but what about the poison ivy? I mean, it's.
With no chemicals, it's tough, I don't care what you do. It's tough, but mowing it, obviously, will keep it to a, you know.
Yeah, will keep it down.
Much more manageable state, but.
True, great, and the board is speaking, and I'm trying to be consistent, Shirley, I'm sorry, I just, is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
I'm trying to be consistent in the way we're treating all of our sessions within. We will attend to this, and I will, once again, remind Carl, I know that he's, he's working very, very hard, and I appreciate all that he does, and he does a fantastic job. I'll make the comment to it.
Yeah, I know, he's pretty, he had mentioned to me at the graduation that, you know, he was going to be attending to it. But I'm just wondering, like, how do you deal with it? My main point is, like, that poison ivy, I mean, I guess, you know, cutting it back is better than nothing, but I'm almost wondering if you need to go in there and just chop it all up and, like, harrow it and rototill it and reseed and try to get some grass growing in there, and then.
Right, if you went on a bi-weekly mowing, you would eventually get rid of the poison ivy, but that, once again, now you're changing things, and there needs to be discussion, that's a lot of maintenance, Susan would probably, you know, tell you that we're stretched pretty thin already, so those are, but, yeah, there's, but, all good points.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. Any other informal discussion? I have nothing under the follow-up items. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.